We'll be live any, we'll be live any second now.
Okay, we'll stop messing around.
Yeah, it's a warning.
No more picking your nose.
Think you saw that, Sherry.
Jeff, you look like you're on one of those specials where they're hiding the identity of the guy they're interrogating.
Yeah, I'm in the witness protection program.
There you go. Max, were you able to see those photographs?
I couldn't see them either, Glenn.
I'll try to, I'll try to resend them at least to you because needs to get to whichever department. Utility, I guess.
Hey Glenn, I'll, I'll go over that actually. We were up in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've had personal conversations with Sunday.
She said that you had.
Yep.
She wanted to make sure it was discussed tonight.
Are we live now?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
Hey Cherry, I've got a question. Okay, me? Yeah, I got two emails today and they sent me some kind of a, maybe this is for Tom, I don't know. It's a cityofkochaton.com audio message received. I got two of them, but I can't play them.
I have not forwarded you any, like our voicemails come in that way now and they go on our computer as it, they go on the phone as a voicemail and on our computer in our email, but I have not forwarded you any.
Well, how do you listen to them? Because like I, when I, and I hit it and I try to listen, it doesn't, there's nothing there. I mean, is that all you do is just hit it? Hit the little link? I just, there's nothing there. So I didn't know, maybe it's a question.
I've got six open, folks. You guys ready? We have everybody here? Looks like it. Anybody missing? Mike won't be here for those here earlier. So we'll go ahead and get started with our committee meeting. We'll start with the administration. Mr. Mayor?
Happy Monday, everyone. A little update on COVID. Nineteen cases confirmed in our, in Koshawten County. Fifteen are recovered. We still have some people on quarantine. Signed the contract with Paymanis last week. It'll be two to four weeks before we get everything implemented and get up, get up running live with Paymanis. That's the online payment system. Wanted to, this past week got with Charles Moon Downtown. His daughter is Tammy Kraus. And wanted to amend the ordinance on the historic preservation commission. We, I want, I'd like to add a couple extra people, one being Tammy Kraus, who has interest in downtown, being that they own, own some real estate down there, and Tiffany Swagger from the Port Authority. I just think that would add our business arm and funding arm to, to that commission along with Tammy, since they have some buildings downtown that need some movement on them. I think the, the mix of people we have on that commission and adding a couple more will be good. We just need to amend the ordinance that was created. So I could add a couple extra people on it. Really just been looking at, at funding, street funding, anticipated loss. We're kind of up in the air how much we're going to get. One, commend Public Works. We're getting creative on, on ways to save money and one way is they have a drag box. It's a piece of equipment that basically we will be able to pave alleys. They're, they're working to get that set up and, and to pave some alleys. Really, you know, the, the coronavirus and, and funding issues are just going to trickle down from the state level to communities. Every day I'm looking at ways maybe we can reach out and get some funding. There's a lot of information to sift through and I've just been, you know, this, it's going to get tough just with the way things have been going. Things are reopening, looking at counties around us. Tuscarawas County has doubled. Maybe not doubled, but almost doubled cases in the past week. So just being aware of what's going on around us. I'm with people. We need to open things up. We need to get the economy going. But without healthy people, we won't have a healthy economy. So just, you know, remind people it's not all about you. It's not all about conspiracy, scout for facts. Keep yourself protected, social distance, and we've heard it a million times. So I'm not going to go on and on and on about it, but there are other people. The older generation is more susceptible to, to negative impacts of COVID, and I think we need to all take a step back and, and make sure we're protecting everyone from this. Want to send out a special thanks. You know, the grass has been growing. Want to send a special thanks out for property owners who are keeping their lawns mowed, who are keeping their properties neat and tidy. If you see a property, maybe your neighbor's property, you think they should mow. It's not out of the realm of possibilities. Maybe that you talk to your neighbor and say, hey, you know, are you going to mow your grass? Definitely will take any complaints about property, property, the way it looks, grass. I know Jeff, this past week cleaned up a property. There's one in every neighborhood and that's what I always tell people. And that's the one that we work hard to get cleaned up in every neighborhood. It takes as much time to fill out the complaint form at cityofkochaton.com than it does to jump on Facebook and complain and get nowhere. So just want to make residents aware that cityofkochaton.com, there's a property complaint form that goes directly to Jeff and Jeff takes care of it. We have sixty-five miles of streets in our city and we have basically one guy enforcing property code. So I would ask that any council member reach out. If you see something, say something. We definitely want to clean it up, but we only have a limited number of eyes. So if there's a, a problem that you all see or anyone watching, anyone in the community, you're not telling on anyone, you're not snitching on anyone. If it doesn't look like you think it should look, then please reach out and let us know. We do work diligently, but I think the majority of properties around town are, have been pretty well kept this, this spring season and, and the, the city is looking pretty nice. So one thing with that said, been receiving complaints about trash receptacles and trash receptacles being left at the curb. Right now, we have an ordinance that states each container placed at the curb or alley is designated above and each other item set out for collection shall be placed at the location though earlier than twenty-four hours prior to the regular date of collection and the locality as established by the contractor. The container shall be moved from the required location within twenty-four hours after the collection has taken place. So with that said, I would like for council to respond on if you care if the totes are in front of a house. If you don't care, Jeff have talked about it today about locations within our city where the trash receptacle stays on the street because, you know, an elderly resident may have fifteen steps to walk down to take the trash where it is physically not acceptable for them to take a full toter down fifteen steps to set it on the curb. To me, as long as the lid's closed, the trap in the toter, on the street or if it's behind the house or it's on the roof or wherever, as long as it's just not overflowing with trash or things like that. So I think by law it says it has to be moved off the street. So I think it's something that we need to look at to, and say it can be on the street or it can't be on the street. So to me, it's not overflowing with trash or, or things like that. So I wanted some input and some feedback and I think that we all probably should decide on and, and it needs to be legislated. So give me your thoughts on that. Everything else is pretty good. We're just working from email and working from our phones. Wanted to thank Tom, actually since he's on here, we'll thank Tom for, he actually has reduced the cost of his services from four thousand a month to two thousand a month due to him knowing budget, budgetary constraints and, and collections within, within our, just wanted to thank him for that and thank, thank him for everything he's done so far. So with that, I am good. I'm, I'm excited to keep moving forward.
All right. Any, any other questions? Anyone have any?
Glenn Mishler, Mark? I don't think I'd be in favor of changing the legislation regarding the containers. If we feel that there's some extenuating circumstances right now, perhaps with people being homebound or whatever, we could ease up on enforcement, but I, I don't think I would like to change the legislation.
Okay.
The only point I'd, I'd like to throw in is remember that that legislation was put in place when these people were just carrying a trash bag or two trash bags and placing them at the curb. And the places that I'm talking about, you know, most everybody in the city does a good job, gets them off, but the place I'm talking about, it's got houses that sit way up on banks. These houses have been there for years and most of the residents that are in those properties have been there for years as well. So they're, they're elderly folks and they can still manage to get their trash bags down to the street. It's just trying to move now two totes back up and down that they're having issues with, but I have people on the street that is complaining about the totes being there. So I can't do selective enforcement. I either need to tell everybody they gotta come off the street or we need to do something to allow them to sit there. You know, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Glenn, but I get into doing that stuff. I get into collective, selective enforcement and if Joe can do it, why can't Bill do it? So.
Yep. The areas that you're discussing, is there an option for back alley pickup?
This area has no alley. It has an alley goes up partway but not behind all the residents and it wouldn't be a through and through alley and it certainly wouldn't be wide enough to get a trash trucked up. If they had it, it's more of a one lane area.
Okay.
Have they been bringing up the smaller, the smaller containers or did they leave those down at the road?
I'm just now starting to hear complaints, I think, since the second tote has showed up. I think people were, were living with the single tote, but now that both of them are there, I think people are complaining and it, it takes up a parking place because they have no yard. I mean, the place I'm talking about, you know, it's not a secret. It, it's, it's the end of Orchard Street up in the, in the sixteen hundred block of Orchard Street. I mean, you get up to the top of that, the house is on that east side or the north side. It's a bank from the curb clear to the house and it's a high bank. So they have absolutely no place to take those totes to. But again, I can't, I can't do it selectively.
Did they keep the small ones down at the road as well?
No, they've got the big ones. I don't know about the small ones because I never had the complaints. I just, I just received the complaint in the last couple of weeks.
I'm just wondering if we could swap it out with a smaller one and then they could bring it back up and.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think the large ones ever did come back up even just for trash. I think it's just since they've added the recycle and the second one is there. So, you know, again, under the point, I've got the complaint. I need to handle complaint. I either need to tell them, you need to drag your totes up to the house or we need to do something to make it easier on everybody.
Can, can we get rid of the larger totes for the older folks and give them back the bin?
Well, see, I don't think they had been just for trash. The bins were just for recycles. And I think, I think the trash bins, I don't know for certain, but I'm guessing the trash bins have been sitting there since the trash bins are received from Kimball.
Aren't there thirty-five gallon totes for trash also? I was thinking at the very beginning, you know, three years ago that there were smaller totes.
Yeah, they make a sixty-five, they make a five gallon toter.
I have a question. What prevents them from just taking the bags down now? I mean, they could use the can up by the house to store it in and on trash night, take the bags down to the road or trash morning or whatever.
I can't answer that. I suppose that, that probably is an option, but then you get into the problem. The reason we went to the totes is they're allowed to have that trash out there twenty-four hours ahead of time. So if their trash gets picked up at seven o'clock in the morning and they're, you know, and they're not able to get down there by that time, they're going to set it out the night before and we're back to having trash bags out for animals to get into.
Okay. Taking bags and I wanted to make sure they're aware that they can still do that.
But I think, you know, I'm talking about back before we had the totes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ordinance, you're talking about adding some language to include, you know, to be able to keep them off the street? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, you know, as, as the mayor spoke and we talked today, you know, the totes are a whole lot different than trash bags sitting there. Again, these people don't even have any yard to get them off the street. It, the bank starts at the curb. So they're going to either have to set it at the curb line or we're going to have to come up with a totally different plan for them. That would be.
I, I have a question. Can we change the language? If, if you have no alley, you may use the front and keep it there or? Bob, can you jump in here and is there something we can do? I don't really want to see these things sitting out all over town. No, I don't.
We could make an exception to the ordinance that says basically if, if your property does not allow for the totes to not be out front for more than twenty-four hours, then, you know, we'll allow them to have it. Basically make an exception for properties that it doesn't make sense to enforce the law. So that, you know, if you have somebody like in my neighborhood or the neighborhoods where it's easy, easy to wheel them back to your garage. There's no reason why they need to sit out there more than twenty-four hours. But on properties like you're talking about and, and there's multiple other locations in Koshawten. Where I could see that it would be difficult for people to wheel it clear back up their either driveway or steps. We could make exceptions to them.
And we could probably make that an exception that we would have to go out and take a look at it and approve them. Instead of just arbitrarily saying do it, you know, myself and Max maybe could go out and take a look and if we agree that it needs to stay at the curb, then it could.
Right. I, I, I could handle something like that on a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. I agree, Chad. I mean, I think if we open it up to, you know, anybody, then we'll have more totes at the street than what we, what we want. I think if we just change that language would be good.
I still think they have the opportunity to trade the tote or the container for the tote with a smaller bucket that they used to be able to use. Cause there's a lot of people don't like the big recyclable container.
Right.
They're only picking it up every two weeks. So if they switch out to those little bins, they're going to be, next, they're going to be mad because they're full after one week.
They're going to have to figure out what they want to be mad about.
I've been saying that for five months. No, Cherry, Cherry, this is my, I'm sure we didn't take this out of the contract. If we have somebody that's I don't want to say older handicapped, whatever, that can't physically handle that tote. Didn't we have in there where the trash company would? They would access right at the house. I believe that's still in place. We didn't take that out of the contract. We just need a list of just mine that we had done his that way.
Yeah, you are the one that deems if you agree that they need the back door service. It's for elderly and disabled people.
I'm not sure people are aware of that, so.
Well, if it's in there, we need to get them a list and then enforce the contract.
Right. That's an option. We never had them not do it for anybody that we put on that list, so.
I defer to the ordinance committee. Is there something you all want to add in some language?
I don't know if we need to add language or just enforce what we already have in the contract as far as that part of it and give them the opportunity to go back to the little, the little tubs instead of the big totes. And then if, I know, I see it as a problem when, when you're driving around and you see the garbage containers and recyclable containers sit out there for a week. I understand there's some areas where, where that is an issue because they don't have any place to put them, but I think overall there, there's more people that's doing that that shouldn't be than there are that really can't store them anywhere.
Right.
If it makes any sense.
I have no problem with what you're talking about, Roger, but even if we took care of the recycling bin problem, just saying that basically they still leave their trash out there all week long. It's just nobody complained before until it became two bins out there. And I don't know how to fix the trash bin problem.
I think if Max, Max can get Kimball the list of houses that are either very elderly or disabled and cannot take those totes from the curb to the house or the garage, then that would be a start and to have Kimball's do their part of the job then. And hopefully that will be a part of the problem because then it, then we should have people who aren't on that list get cited for not taking their containers back.
Anybody see a problem? Was that opening up a can of worms?
I mean, somebody's got to contact me. I don't know whether you're elderly or handicapped in each house in town, but if they want to participate, that's all they have to do is contact us.
I agree, Max.
All right, it's out there.
All righty. Anything else?
I have one more question for the mayor.
I do too, and Chad's done.
All right.
Have we heard anything about the swimming pools this year? From the health department? Are they going to open or add some people because they're going to do their CPR course and their, their training and they're, they're just wanting to, they should or not? As far as I know, I, and I don't know specifics. I mean, it's just what I've saw as far as Lake, the Lake Park, the Aquatic Center. They want to open. They, the problem becomes when and you need to staff those facilities. And if you don't know when, a lot of kids, you know, that takes numerous lifeguards to staff that. And if you don't know when you're opening, that's going to create the issue more than anything because you don't know. And then when you need those people to work, then they might have other employment. So that's been, actually, we talked a lot about that on the Mayor's Association Zoom meetings weekly. And a lot of people are just up in the air because if you open on middle of June, middle of July, you know, June or July, then you don't have much left in the summer. So I think right now, there has, has not been a decision made. It's probably not going to happen, but I don't know. Do you like that?
Okay, anything for, it is six thirty. Anything for her?
Mark, a resident asked me about the water bill procedure as far as paying that and they asked, and I don't think there was, but I want to make sure. They, they already have their bill paid through their checking account. You know, it's just a direct draw from their checking account.
Right.
They will not be charged for that, correct?
They will not be charged for that and any existing, if they sign up on the Paymanis system, they will be charged a, a dollar ninety-five for having that on there. If they don't want that charge and want to take a check to the water office and have the ACH draw done, there will not be a charge.
That's what they're currently doing. So they just want to make sure there wasn't going to be a charge yet. And I totally did not believe them.
I think there's five hundred customers approximately right now. And I think that was a little misstated in the newspaper article also. So if they're already on HCA, ACH draw and they have a check on file at the utilities office as of right now, they will not be charged a processing fee through Paymanis. If they sign up with Paymanis, they will be charged that processing fee.
Beacon is supposed to clarify that for us this week.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay. Max?
I'll run through pretty quick since we're short on time. Public Works, working hard on mowing cemeteries. Asphalt for patching has precedence over everything right now as weather allows and materials available. Mark talked about what our plan is to try to work on some of these alleys ourselves. Boat ramps, as the river level drops, we need to scrape those so our people can start using them. And just a little thing on the Water Works boat ramp that we put in late last year. The Muscam Water Shed dropped me off. I don't know, probably two thousand brochures and some nice plaques. When the weather gets decent, they would like us to do a live opening and obviously mount their signs there. And so I would request Cliff and then a council members, whatever day we decide to do that. They'd like us to make a video, send it to them. They'll put it on their website. So we're actually the last stop on the Tuscarawas Water Trail. So they're excited that we put a boat ramp in there. And I'll be distributing those brochures as soon as all this COVID stuff gets out of here. They can put it like the hotels and the CBB that shows where that whole water trail is. We're also, a couple guys that's not involved in patching. We're mowing this week along Clyl Lane, at Seago Avenue and trimming along all the guardrails. Nothing really to report at the plants. It's business as usual. We are back to normal staffing there. The guys are practicing the social distancing, still taking temperatures. And we've got a good supply of masks there. So if they are around each other in close proximity, they're wearing masks. Well, so if you have project, we're still waiting on the final funding sign offs from the EPA part of it. Everything else is getting in place. I do have one neat thing using technology. We haven't been able to hold our safety meetings, as you know, just because of number of people in our room. So our department managers Thursday will be participating in a Bureau of Workers Compensation webinar on zero energy. So we'll try to keep a little safety training going there and that's why I have, I'm open to questions.
Anyone? Go ahead.
Where are we on the new bridge as far as, and the water break that seems to be a problem in the COTC new parking lot?
We are a company that done the boring on that line. We'll be here Friday. We've been in contact with ODOT and as well as that boring company. We done, performed a pressure test on it last Thursday at a hundred fifty PSI. They're not, never had any drop in pressure. So we're kind of wondering, did we hit a pocket of spring? Does not, when they done the water test, it has a trace amount of fluoride in it which can be natural groundwater can have a small amount of fluoride. So we're kind of still in the evaluating stage right now. So, and what was, what was the other part of your question, Roger?
The, the new bridge. What's our timeline?
Timeline's still August twenty-second is for, for them to be totally complete on it. So that's the best I have. This time we've not had an update meeting since the virus come about. So I don't have a good definite time to give you outside of August twenty-second date.
All right. Thank you.
Matt, Max, would you, this is Glenn. Max, would you say then that the lanes will not open? Matt, Max, would you, this is Glenn. Max, would you say then that the lanes will not open and likely until August twenty-second?
I, I don't know that Glenn. I mean, the reason they're closed right now is obviously for the painting that's going on under the bridge. They're working seven days a week on that. Uh when they get the south side done, they'll be going, you know, they'll switch the lanes. We'll be driving on the south side while the north side's being painted, so. Um I don't, like I said, I haven't had an update to know when that project will be completed, so.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Um hey, Max. Is there, um, is there some kind of a small leak going down Buena Vista?
Hmm, not that I'm aware of. We always have that spring that starts out up there above Rock Ice House and runs all the way down through almost.
I just wonder, is um we, we're walking the dogs the other day and it's, it seems like water's been running there a long time. It's kind of mildewy and moldy underneath. Right hand side as you're going up Buena Vista. Is that?
That's the spring. It starts, oh, I don't know who lives there now. I think one of the waters built that house up above me there. It starts there between it and uh that next two story there that's, was built probably ten years ago. Uh right across from like where surveys live.
Yeah, it seemed like it was coming out of the ground up there.
Yeah. It's just old mine water that uh yeah, causes ice problems and everything else down through there, but.
Anything further, anybody? All right. Sherry?
Hello. Um well, first of all, I'll get the um easy part out of the way. I emailed you um the detailed, detailed check report for April first, the fifteenth, and then there was a then and now in the um April cash statement. So if anybody has any questions on those, I can answer those now, but then when we go to the regular council meeting, you'll just need to approve those in the minutes.
Can you say the detail check dates again, please?
Um the first and the fifteenth. Thank you. You're welcome. Um also I went ahead um and just looked at the general fund that I just give you a little just quick um brief update on that um where we're standing. Um now, when I say general fund, that's just not income tax money. That's any revenue that comes in, property tax, um charges of our services and so forth that comes in. Um in two thousand and nineteen, our revenue into the general fund in April, year to date, was one million five hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um here in two thousand and twenty, one million four hundred and fifty-two, nine thirty-four. So it's um down six percent. And um our expenses are actually down six percent too. So I think, you know, within the general fund, they're doing a good job of keeping that emergency spending down. So our total expenses in nineteen was one million seven hundred and twenty-two compared to one million six hundred and twenty-seven so far year to date here in April. Um so I wanted to let you know that. And then um just for an example, um on the MVL fund, that's the motor vehicle license tax. It comes in a month behind. Um so like in January, we received the December payment. February, we received the January money. Um the first three months, we received about sixty-two hundred dollars a month. And um here just um this week or last week, we received the April um MVL and it was only twenty-six hundred dollars. So you know, I'm sure, you know, we're going to make that up and we'll eventually get that in, but you know, with them having the extension of the deadlines, you know, for people to renew their, renew their license, that revenue is just going to come in a little bit slower. Um I, you know, I was interested in the street fund to see where that was at. Um oddly compared to last year, our um, our revenue is up. But um you know, we've had some other things hit the street fund this year, um some FEMA money, um some BWC refunds. Um and at the beginning of the um January, February, um the gasoline tax was up. So even right now, um you know, it had topped, it was usually, it used to be like twenty-seven thousand dollars a month. We'd get in gasoline tax into the street fund. And it jumped up to around forty-four, forty-six. And then in April here, it was still at forty-one thousand. So it'll be interesting to see what it is here in May for April. But right now, you know, streets kind of holding steady there, um just but probably only because of that other, you know, that other revenue coming into there. Um so I have that um next week, um or not next week, on our next meeting, which I think if I'm looking at the calendar correctly, will be Tuesday because the Monday, the Memorial Day um holiday. Um I will, um we'll have, I'll get with Mark in between time. We'll have the twenty twenty-one budget to present. So we might need, you know, a little bit more extra time for that, you know, ten fifteen minutes since we have, you know, two new councilwomen, um so we can go over that and um we'll, you know, so heads up, we don't need a little bit more time in two weeks. One other thing that I have tonight um for, to ask for you to put on the agenda for the next council meeting is a um a resolution. Higher revised code dictates how we deposit our money. And our money, if it's over a thousand dollars, must be deposited the next business day. However, if it's under a thousand dollars, we have, we can deposit it up to three business days. But there's a little catch in there that um the um the person, it is, if the public office of which the person is a public official, is governed by a legislative authority, only the alleged legislative authority may adopt such a policy. So in looking at the pay mantis, and this is what um got me looking at this, and I have looked at it before, um is with the new pay mantis paying online, if somebody pays their bill on Tuesday, it's not going to hit our bank until Thursday. So if those are going to come in in a large batch, in that money is if, if the water office and, and Becky and I are going to get together and I apologize, you know, we were going to do it last week, but um quite frankly, with everything with my mom passing away, it, you know, it, it just couldn't work for Becky and I to get together last week. So we still have to do that. We're going to have to talk about how we're going to post these payments. But I think if we can adopt a policy and to be able to go along with this, a higher revised code, that if a deposit comes in under a thousand dollars, we have three business days to get that deposited then. And I can say there's been a few times, not very often has, you know, there might be an issue um that we've kind of got a little ding in our audit that um say if another office um takes money in and um for whatever it is, for permit, I'm just going to use this for example, if they get a permit money in. Um and if for some reason it ju- you know, that check kind of gets set to the side and doesn't get back over to my office past the three days, the auditors, they go through and they check those deposits, you know, okay, it was, you know, it was given to the, this office on this date, but you didn't get it deposited until, you know, after the three days or four days. Um so this would just prevent that, but it's still always, they would still always have to be deposited within three business days. Um so what I was expecting is, um I was thinking Bob and I, I could get him this high revised code. We could come up with the language. Um and I, you know, Bob, I'll let Bob decide if it's ordinance or a resolution. It's when it said adopt a policy, to me, that was just a resolution. But you know, higher revised code is law, ordinance is law, so I'll let the hall director, you know, determine that one. But I just wanted to have it in place to, you know, help protect with the pay mantis and then you know, if any other oddball situation would happen to come up down the line. I don't know. Is anybody having questions?
A question? All right. Thank you. Moving right along. Bob, you have anything for us?
No, Sherry, if you just send me that revised code section so I can look at it and then I'll let you know whether it's resolution or ordinance.
Okay, will do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Jeff, Courtney?
No, I have nothing further. Nothing further. You received my report today on email, so if you have questions, I'll answer that, but other than that, nothing.
All righty. We'll move to the ordinance committee. Anything to give this, this evening?
Nothing.
Finance committee?
Nothing.
Infrastructure committee?
Is that Mike?
Yeah, who's on that committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, infrastructure, nothing to report.
Yes. Grants and economic development, any reports? Housing and property maintenance?
No.
Safety services committee? Auction recreation committee, any question? Insurance committee? And the rules committee?
No.
Anybody have anything further?
One little note.
All right.
Michelle, nice, nice front page uh article in yesterday's paper for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. And Sherry, we uh have condolences for the loss of your mother and our sympathies with you.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. I have six forty. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming through.
Jackie. Yep. I sent you a text regarding those emails.